Chair Skaj, President. Brad Cohen.
Here.
John Bronco. Mary Furtig. Steve Gannon. Sherry McCartney. William Rotella.
Here.
Jay Scheckman.
Here.
Michael Waymoth.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, uh, let's stand. All right, so we have myself, who's gonna be chair today, Jay Scheckman to my left, Michael Waymoth uh, to my right, Steve Gannon to my right, and Bill Rotella is to my left. Uh, the recording secretary is Carla Blair.
Leslie Harmon.
Oh, sorry. I like Carla Blair better. No, Leslie, nice to meet you. And then Ella from Urban Design and Planning, uh, would you like to introduce the staff?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening. Ella Parker, Urban Design and Planning Manager, with us from staff tonight, we have Assistant City Attorney Shari Wallen, Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence, from the Planning Department, Adam Schnell, Mike Ferreira, and Tyler LaForme, and from Public Works DSD Igor Vasiliou.
Thank you, and has everyone on the board reviewed the minutes of April twentieth of twenty twenty-two, and are there any additions or corrections?
I move we accept the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes from April twentieth of twenty twenty-two, uh, will be approved.
Mary's here.
Um, anyone is, what'd you say?
Mary's here.
Oh, good. Uh, and just, who just walked in just now is Mary Furtig, who will be, uh, sitting with us as well, who's on the board. Uh, if anyone who, tonight who's gonna be speaking this evening, um, you should be sworn in. I don't know if you, you, if anybody's gonna be speaking, but if so, stand up and be sworn in at this point.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, each person's gonna have three minutes to speak when your turn is to speak. Um, any neighborhood association will have five minutes, and the applicant will have fifteen minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, uh, if necessary. Uh, the first case up is UDP SR twenty-one zero zero two. It is a site plan level four, rezoning from residential to mid-rise.
Do you want to do the disclosures?
Oh, I'm sorry, any disclosures?
I have none.
Mike Waymoth, none.
Bill Rotella, none.
None since last, uh, since last meeting.
Jay?
I, I have none either.
Mary? Uh, none from me, Brad Cohen. Also, uh, should, is there a staff report on this that we want to make part of the record?
So moved.
You can do that in your motion, uh, but you could go ahead, either way. You could do it in your motion.
Let's do that before.
I move that we make the site, um, make the report part of the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the, the staff report will be made part of the record, and you can begin.
All right, hello, my name is Davina Bean. Um, I represent the property at eighteen hundred West State Road, um, eighty-four. I also have Mario Martinez with me here. Um, uh, the reason why we're here today is to revisit the issue that we had previous to now in reference to the development of our site, um, as well as to the site plan approval and the rezoning of the point one-one, um, of acres for development on the actual property itself. Uh, prior to now, we had issues with the, um, the neighbors. Yeah, prior to now, we had issues with the neighbors, and we wanted to go ahead and be able to address those, um, concerns. Uh, we were able to meet with the neighborhood, um, HOA, as well as the apartment owners to the rear of our property. Um, and we were able to go ahead and settle the questions and concerns they had in reference to the distancing and the buffering of the buil- the building from their actual property, um, the development of the five-foot wall that we have, as well as two layers of, um, landscaping that will be right behind our property, to go ahead and give a tiered, um, approach to the building of our, um, facility itself. Um, so we're revisiting today so that we can go ahead and get site plan approval, as well as rezoning for the point one-one, um, part of the parcel in the rear of our property.
Was there amended site plan submitted to the city to reflect these changes?
We're here for the, just a rezoning portion of it, not the site plan approval, so that's, that's what we're here for, okay? We have a presentation as well, we can go through it.
So we have the, um, the presentation loaded here on the laptop. Okay, here we go. All right, so as you can see here would be the actual forefront of the building itself, uh, which is a six-story storage building. It will be building on State Road eighty-four. Um, everything is internal from here. Um, nothing will be left outside. Here, we actually have our property layout, um, in reference to the rezoning that's in question, um, to the rear of the actual parcel itself. Most of it is, um, zoned for commercial, commercial usage. Um, it's just the point one-one, um, percentage of the parcel that's in the back of it that we're asking for it to be rezoned, to allow for us to be able to develop. Uh, we have it outlined here, um, in reference to our site plan that we have right now, and as you can see with the yellow portion in the rear, the triangle, that's the point one-one, um, of the actual parcel that we want to get, uh, rezoned to allow for development. Our building actually sits further up to the beginning of the actual plan itself, so it wouldn't be in this rear part here, but for us to be able to develop, we would need approval to get it rezoned. On this next slide here, it shows the, uh, landscaping that will be attached to the actual development of the property. Um, to the rear, we'll have a five-foot, uh, wall to go ahead and block off from the adjacent property, as well as two rows of landscaping. Um, we have the first row of trees there. They're, um, developed to grow up to twelve feet in height, and the second tier there is going to be able to give a tiered look to the approach of the building, um, from the rear of the actual property itself. The building sets, sits off, um, a little over forty-five feet from the adjacent property that's right behind us. And here, we actually have, uh, the elevations of the west wall that we have here that faces the, um, adjacent property to the rear of us as well. All right, and that's all we have for the actual presentation.
Question? Can you tell us what were some of the concerns that were expressed, and, um, I'm sure we'll hear from the public today to see if you were able to assuade those concerns?
Of course. Um, one of the main concerns were the traffic levels that would be increasing in that, um, in that area due to the development of our storage facility. Uh, we were able to meet with the HOA, uh, the president and the vice president to, um, assure them that we do have a layout there to reduce the actual, um, footprint that we're having in the actual area itself, and we presented them an actual traffic flow that showed, um, storage compatibility, um, in reference to once customers move into the units versus how many times they frequent the actual facility itself. Uh, they were really satisfied with the way that it would not, you know, deter traffic, well, it would deter traffic through their HOA association. Uh, we did advise them as well that if you put it in, the address on any GPS, it does take them through a different way to actually, you know, approach the actual facility itself as well. Um, as well as everything being internal, they were really thrilled about it not interfering with the actual traffic flow within their neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one more concern was the, the fencing. They didn't, uh, realize what type of fencing we would be putting in, so, um, um, we, we showed them, you know, we would meet the code with a five-foot brick fence, a decorative fence, so they were happy about that, and then the additional, uh, trees, like she said, the first layer, twelve-foot, grow up to twelve feet, and the second layer of trees that we, we decided to add through the back, those will grow eighty to a hundred feet. So, they're, they're happy about that as well.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing no other questions for the applicant, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this matter?
Brad, can you talk into the mic? I can't hear you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak on this matter? And you've been sworn in?
I'm Nancy Long, President of River Oaks Civic Association. We're on the other side of State Road eighty-four. When this was first presented to us, it looked like a regular storage unit building. It was horrific, actually, and the city asked them to change the design, and I just want to say we're really happy with what you did on rechan- changing the design. It looks more like an office building, and it actually works in our neighborhood, and thank you.
Nancy, I have a question for you.
Okay.
So, the road of concern, I think, for traffic in your neighborhood is that, um, trying to find it here on the map, where, what's, what's the road that people go down?
State Road eighty-four, but where this is gonna be, it, it actually curves under the bridge, so it has a nice turnaround under there for them, and there's really no back traffic for them because it's a dead-end road right there at ninety-five.
But for them to get to that, to the site, they have to go south and then through the neighborhood, correct, and then north, and then east?
Well, they'd have to make a U-turn on eighty-four and go under the bridge to get to it.
Right.
Because I, can you get to it from the back, too?
The GPS will take you north, you make a left, you go north, and then you go under the bridge. It curves around right to the property, so north and south.
For traffic heading eastbound on eighty-four, is there a left turn lane to make a left there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a left turn to make that turn, and then go, come under and come around the side.
Understood, and Nancy, for the folks that don't make that left, who, who do go through the neighborhood, I was, in speaking with some of the residents there, it came to my attention that there's a main road there that is highly trafficked, um, with no speed bumps, and might be in need of some traffic calming measures?
Well, right now, because they're working on I ninety-five, they've made a double turn U-turn, and then they have a single U-turn into River Oaks. So it's actually right now, but once they get the I ninety-five done in two more years, it'll change back to where we have the three lanes. It'll be a lot smoother, but right now, it seems to be working. Everybody's getting used to it. Um, but I don't see how it affects our neighborhood at all with the traffic. I think just eighty-four is eighty-four. But they turn around under the bridge and go to the, uh, storage unit, so I think it's, for us, it doesn't really come into our neighborhood.
And Southwest Thirty-Fifth Street?
That's Edgewood, on the other side.
Understood, and is that still, would you mind coming to the mic?
Good evening, I'm Wendy Wills, the President of Edgewood Civic Association.
Um, question, or is, we, we had spoken, um, and you had expressed concerns about just generally traffic on Thirty-Fifth, Thirty-Fifth Street, and is it, is it your impression that there will be some traffic that may go through that street to get to the site?
Um, there may be some traffic, but because it's a public storage unit, there's gonna be very little traffic because it's not like you're going to a business every single day where I have my own storage unit. I may go there once every four months, so it's not gonna be as much like the U-Haul that's presently right next door to the west.
Okay, yeah, there, I just brought, I just wanted to bring it to the, to the group's attention because you, you had expressed that Thirty-Fifth Street just generally, irrespective of this project, is a long street that cars speed on, um, and there's that, there's no speed humps, um, today.
Correct.
So, I, I, I thought that we should, it'd be helpful for us to put that on the record, um, to see if maybe, you know, staff can initiate a traffic study of that street and determine if speed humps may be applicable.
Um, you know, there is gonna be traffic. I mean, it's just the nature, um, but I think with the storage unit, there's not gonna be as much traffic in addition to it being put in there, like the U-Haul. I would love a traffic study done, and we're, as an association, we are, um, gonna be working on getting speed, um, humps in, uh, Edgewood specifically on Southwest Fifteenth Avenue and Southwest Thirty-Fifth Street.
Fantastic. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public would want to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Does anyone have a motion to make?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does your motion include staff conditions?
Yes.
We established that early on.
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero, or six to zero, apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is case number two, UDP V two-one zero zero four. It's vacationing of a right-of-way. The applicant is the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Uh, do the disclosures?
Disclosures?
None.
Site visit, Steve Gannon.
Mike Waymoth, none.
Bill Rotella, none.
Mary Furtig, site visit.
Brad Cohen, none. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, members of the board. Tyler LaForme, Urban Design and Planning. Um, this is an application for a right-of-way vacation, uh, on behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale. We're vacating a fifty-foot right-of-way by a three-hundred-foot-long portion of Southeast Fourth Avenue, just south of, uh, the Tarpon River. Um, there is an exhibit, Exhibit Three, the last page, that shows a location map of the, uh, vacation to be, to take place.
Can we, can we fix what's, uh, on the screen now? I think this is from the last meeting we had.
I think it's from last night.
Oh, from last night.
Um, I don't have the, uh, presentation for you tonight. It's just the, uh, the exhibits.
So is that the extent of your presentation?
Um, pretty much. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's, uh, pro-
Very straightforward.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone from the public want to speak on that? That was a, a one-minute presentation. That was a good one. I don't know if anyone from the public can even speak on that. Anyone from the public want to speak on it? Uh, seeing no one from the public want to speak, we'll close the, uh, the, the public speaking. Um, bring it back to the board.
I move that we, uh, approve UDP V twenty-one oh oh four.
And that's, um...
That includes staff conditions in the staff report?
That's what I was just gonna add, just gonna add.
Didn't realize there were some. Yes, let's make it subject to the staff conditions in the staff report.
And I think that, uh, originally I said, uh, I didn't know if I said to include the staff report on all of them, but I can do that. Or do you want me to do each separate one?
You could do one motion in the beginning, or you could just incorporate it in your motion to approve?
Let's just do one motion in the beginning that will, uh, we will include staff reports to be part of the record.
So you want to just do, do it after he's done with this motion to approve?
Correct.
That way it's not, okay.
Yes. All right, so your mo- you, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Bill Rotella, second.
Ready for roll?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, we're moving on to number three, which is UDP V two-one zero zero five. Are there any disclosures?
Mike Waymoth, none, and please try not to be so lengthy on this presentation.
Jay Scheckman, none.
Bill Rotella, none.
Steve Gannon, site visit.
Mary Furtig, site visit.
Um, I have to ask staff, I own property that's within like a hundred feet of the, although this is just vacating a right-of-way, it's not gonna affect me one way or the other if it gets granted or not, but I want to make the disclosure that I have property within a hundred feet of the, of the property.
Okay, uh, you don't have to recuse yourself or anything.
Okay.
That's just speculative.
Okay, great. Take it away.
All right, uh, I'll keep it short.
Let's see.
This request, uh, is to the City of Fort Lauderdale for a vacation of right-of-way just adjacent to Southeast Fourth Street. Uh, it's a twenty-eight-foot wide by three-hundred-and-three-foot-long, uh, portion of Southeast Tenth Corps, which runs east-west, just adjacent to Southeast Fourth, so that is my full presentation.
Just real quick, you said Port Street, but I believe it's Fourth Avenue.
Or Fourth Avenue, correct.
Anyone from the public want to speak on the matter?
Tyler, on, on both items, staff just wants to clarify, um, we reviewed it against the right-of-way vacation criteria, and that's all part of your staff report and part of your backup.
Seeing no one wants to speak from the, uh, public, we'll close the public, uh, speaking, um, bring it back to the board, and let's make a motion at this point, uh, to include all staff reports from this case going forward, that we include all staff reports for, uh, each one of the cases. Yeah, that's a-
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who?
Jay Scheckman made the motion.
Who, who seconded?
Does anyone second it?
Steve Gannon, second.
Steve Gannon seconds it.
I'll second, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can bring it back to the board. Are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the case UDP V twenty-one zero zero five.
Second.
Is it subject to all the conditions in the staff report?
I thought that's what we just approved.
Thank, uh, well, no, the approval of it.
I'll reiterate that, I'm happy to.
Yes, the approval, thank you.
Is there a second?
I think somebody already seconded it.
I think Mike seconded.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, sorry. Steve Gannon, second.
Okay. All right, you can call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Six to zero passes.
All right, case number four, UDP S two-one zero three-three. Are there any disclosures?
Um, I have disclosure. Rob, this is Jay Scheckman. Robert Lockery called me earlier today. We didn't really go into any detail about the project, um, but he mentioned it was coming onto the board today, and I've also, um, the, the applicants, um, have, um, mentioned to me that this, that they were in the process of this, um, project, you know, about a year ago or so.
Okay, any other disclosures?
Mike Waymoth, none.
Steve Gannon, site visit, and, uh, spoke with applicant's counsel.
Bill Rotella spoke with applicant's counsel.
Mary Furtig visited the site and spoke with, uh, Mr. Lockery.
And I spoke with Mr. Lockery, Brad Cohen. All right.
Good evening to the board. Robert Lockery, on behalf of the applicant. Um, I can't go as quickly as Tyler, but I will try to get through this fairly quickly. Um, there are two items on your agenda that are associated with the same property, item number four and number five, and if it would please the board, I can make one presentation, knowing that you all will be considering them separately and voting on them separately.
I move that we hear them both.
Second.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right, um, as I said, there, these are two items. The item number four is a site plan approval, and item number five is a plat approval. Therefore, the same properties, um, twenty-three hundred Southwest Fifteenth Avenue, which is located in the River Oaks neighborhood. Here you see an overview of the neighborhood, a little more specificity on it. Here you have north at the top, of course, and south at the bottom. Um, the property is roughly about halfway between State Road eighty-four, which you see curving over to the south there, um, and, uh, Southwest Twentieth on the north, and of course is right along Fifteenth. Here you see where the property is outlined in yellow. Um, the property is just under five acres. It's four-point-nine-three acres, and is located just north of the Fort Lauderdale Nazarene Church. Um, the property is largely vacant, unimproved land. Um, it is currently zoned RD fifteen. It has a Broward County Land Use designation of residential sixteen units per acre. It has a City of Fort Lauderdale land use designation of fifteen units per acre, and a corresponding residential duplex, fifteen units per acre zoning. Um, under the zoning regulations and the, and the city land use plan, the property at four-point-nine-three acres would yield about seventy-three residential units. The request before you tonight is for far less for that. We are requesting a approval of a zero-lot line, single-family development with thirty-four single-family homes. That brings the density, although the zoning would allow up to fifteen units per acre, what is actually being proposed is about six-point-eight units per acre, so a little bit less than half what would ordinarily be permitted. Um, the RD fifteen zoning, in addition to the zero-lot line, single-family, which we're requesting tonight, also allows for duplex. Actually, duplex would not even come before the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as cluster homes. I know you all have seen many other projects within the RDZ, RD fifteen zoning. Um, with this proposal, as I said, we're proposing thirty-four single-family zero-lot line homes. Um, they'll be located around a central driveway, which will loop around from Fifteenth Avenue to the east, and then back out to Fifteenth Avenue. Um, the thirty-four, the thirty-four lots are all designed to meet all zoning regulations. We're not asking for any zoning changes. We're not asking for waivers, and we're not asking for any variances. With that in mind, a zero-lot line home, which I'll explain what that is, is still required to meet the general single-family zoning requirements, for, for example, front setback of twenty-five feet, rear setback of fifteen feet. Um, that is all provided in this area. The one thing that makes a little bit different, from example, from RS eight, um, which is a more traditional single-family zoning district, in those cases, you have a five-foot side setback. We are all familiar with that. The houses are ten feet apart, but you've got five feet on either side of your property. Which, what makes your lot line unique is that you get a full ten feet on one side. So essentially, the lot is built, or the house is built on the property line on one side, and then you have a ten-foot, um, yard on your side yard. It allows for much more use of that area. It makes a lot more sense, um, from a planning standpoint, and yet the houses are still separated as they would be in any other single-family neighborhood. Um, the entrance will contain a landscape buffer between the development itself and Fifteenth Avenue. Fifteenth Avenue will be lined with, uh, live oaks, with thatch palms in between the oaks, and royal palms as an entry feature as you come in. The general, um, design of the prop- property will contain a lot of live oaks. That's the primary, um, shade tree that's being incorporated, as well as, as you'll see from the next diagram, where you see the actual roadway, a landscape buffer between the road itself and sidewalks. Those sidewalks contain, continue around the entire site, as well as connect to Fifteenth Avenue and go north and south along Fifteenth. So a really nice, um, design outline for the project itself. There are about four different, um, model homes, all with different architectural styles that you can also take. So these are just an example of some of the homes. Um, they're two-story homes, although the zoning code does allow up to three stories. It allows up to thirty-five feet. Um, these homes, and through this approval, will be restricted to about twenty-nine and a half feet, so that's, that's, uh, the site plan that's before you. We know that in the River Oaks neighborhood, uh, drainage has historically been an issue, and so the engineers who are working on this project, Craven Thompson, have been working very closely with the city to ensure that this site does not cause any additional impact on any neighboring properties. They also coincidentally are working on the city's, um, drainage solutions for the entire neighborhood, and so are coordinating with the city, the work the city will be doing along Fifteenth Avenue, retaining all the water on this site, as well as, again, coordinating with the city on its activities on Fifteenth. Um, we have spent a good deal of time, um, working through with the neighborhood. We approached them about a year ago, have been talking to them about the project. I know there are representatives from the neighborhood here as well, and I have a letter, um, from the neighborhood related to the project and support. That's the site plan, which is item four. Item five is a boundary plat, as the name would describe. It's a plat that's a boundary of the property. Um, we're required to do that because this, this individual portion was never platted. It was part of a much larger plat from the nineteen-teens. Um, and so that is the purpose of the plating portion of this. We note that both the planning report, uh, regarding the site plan and the plat, um, note that we meet all zoning regulations, all land development regulations related to these two applications. We accept all conditions of approval, and are happy to- We accept all conditions of approval and are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Mary?
Yes, you and I spoke about this earlier, but I just wanted to have you speak a moment about the, the concurrency report from the school board.
So, in addition to, as part of the process that the city goes through, we're required to get a letter from the school board. We also have water sewer capacity letters, as well as traffic letters from different agencies to ensure that the plans do meet all requirements. We did receive a school capacity letter, approval letter in July, actually last year. It will be updated once the approval is actually granted by the city and then we have to go back prior to building permit. And to answer the question specifically, you were of course, Ms. Furtig, right on with the schools. This is within the area of Croissant Park Elementary, which is under-enrolled slightly. New River and Sunrise, New River is over-capacity, Sunrise is under-enrolled, and Stranahan High School, which is under-enrolled. The school boards, I want to make sure I get the termination right. District Capacity Allocation Team has met and determined that the needs of this project will be met with a combination of Sunrise and New River, that they, they run that process. And I can hand you copies of that letter and that we meet all state requirements related to school concurrency.
Okay, I'm just going to say, I want to get this on the record and I think we make Zoe aware of this. New River Middle is at 100, almost 112% capacity. Sunrise Middle is almost, the last time I looked, almost right there at capacity. I like to take a chance, I like to take every opportunity to tell people how successful our city schools are. But, great project, the way you explained it to me, families moving in, families moving in are going to want schools for their children, so I feel like for the future of this neighborhood and others within those boundaries and with the school board getting ready to take on the entire issue, that this is something our city should be looking at. I can imagine a lot of families would want to move in here just to get their kids into New River Middle. So I would, I'm, 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 well, we haven't heard, heard public comment, so I won't say where I am on it right now, but I just want to add that as a concern and I looked at the figures before I came tonight, so I know pretty much where they are during this little COVID downturn.
Right, understood.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Brad?
I do.
Go ahead.
Robert, a couple of quick questions. One, on the portion of the house that's on the zero lot line, how does that homeowner address maintenance on that because they have to now trespass onto their neighbor's property? And then the second part of the question is, I noticed that there's an overhang on these roofs, so obviously on that same side, water will not be retained on their property. How does that get addressed?
Yeah, good question and luckily the city ordinance actually provides for that. The city attorney will ensure that there's a three-foot maintenance easement that the adjoining property has over their neighbor's property, so they won't be trespassing. That's the good news. They have the right to go in there to make repairs and also for the drainage. And it's all one drainage system. So the homeowners association will ultimately be responsible for the entire, the developer and the homeowners for the entire drainage system, rather than each home operating on its own.
Even though the roof water cascades onto the neighbor's property-
It then flows into-
Kills her rose garden and all that kind of stuff.
That's correct, that's correct. There's about 20% of the site that's open space, not including the lots. There's a lot more if you add the lots, but there's an additional 20% of the overall site which is used for drainage retention.
Thank you.
Do they, so the line, the dividing line is owned by both property owners then?
The house sits on your property, but you have an easement of three feet over your neighbor's property. It's, it's, this is very typically done in a lot of new residential communities. We don't have a lot in Fort Lauderdale because frankly our lot layout is so old. It's from the 1920s and 30s.
So if there's a fence, it's distinguishable who that belongs to?
That's correct, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I have one. So, so you mentioned the road was more of a driveway, so, and you answered my question, I think, that there is an association, I suppose the association maintains the road, it's not a public road, nothing to do with the city.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and-
The city does have easements for utilities, but beyond that it's a private driveway, like you see in most subdivisions.
My, my only concern is that, is that there are a lot of nice old oak trees on that property and perimeter and I see in, in your, in your site plan, you do have a lot of trees, but they're obviously not going to be mature like the ones that are there when, when you're, you're planting them. It'd be nice if you could save any of the ones that, again, they seem like they were around the perimeter. Do they have to go?
Well, there's about 157 trees on the site. At the end of the project, there'll be about 197. So the tree, the amount of trees, the overall canopy will ultimately be increased. One of the difficulties with any site like this is the elevation of the site and also preparing for the drainage and how all that works. So the site does come up. We'd love to save as many trees as we can. We know that when you raise a site, it can have some impact on the trees. So we've worked with our arborists to see if there was anything that could be identified, but it will mostly be new trees. There's also what you see in the canopy, as, as the arborist report indicates that you have, there's also a lot of Brazilian pepper in there. There's a lot of native, I mean, non-native exotics that legally have to come out, Australian pines, et cetera. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak? Was everybody sworn in?
Yes.
Were you sworn in? Okay, just, be, get sworn in. Could you swear her in?
Yes.
Actually, swear in when she approaches the podium.
No, not at all.
All the kids too? This one?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ted Hensera and I've been here quite a few times, from the Ismonda Cluster to the South Andrews Corridor and all the time, same old story. It's, you know, I'm against this project. 15th Avenue is a two-lane road. So we're talking, if he's, if the numbers are correct, we're talking a possible of 68 to 75 more cars along 15th Avenue. Now, it sounds great. I mean, boy, what a great presentation. He has the optics, everything, unless you live in the neighborhood, and I do live in the neighborhood. I live within walking distance of this area. And it, it is, the traffic there is already a nightmare and to, let's just cram more stuff. Every time, oh my gosh, we got an open space, let's build something. You know, what happened to having open spaces? Why is that so bad anymore? And I live on 19th Street. Now 20th Street is like the main east-west corridor through River Oaks. And it's a two-lane road, right down residential area. It leads, if you turn left on 15th Avenue, then you get to 84, or if you go straight, you get to the Marina and Yacht Restaurant, which is a very good restaurant. Great shrimp, poor boy, but anyway, the, so, and I live on 19th, 19th Street, the next street over. Now, 20th Street has four stop signs and six speed bumps. Now, 19th Street has one stop sign. Now, people have realized and the trucks have realized that it's much easier to zoom down 19th Street to avoid all of this and then cut over real quick on Coconut Drive to the same spot on 15th Avenue. So we got, I mean, these 18-wheelers, they don't want to go over these speed bumps. So they just, oh, let's just shoot down 19th Street and we get to the same spot in a lot quicker of a time. So that, that is just ridiculous. I mean, sometimes progress, sometimes progress is just knowing when to stop, you know, I mean, it, you know, it doesn't mean just keep going and going and going. I mean, you talk about Croissant Park Elementary, that already has 12 portables and then you built the big, the, what is it, 131 unit in the South Andrews Corridor by, and which is going to have a lot of kids, you're going to have, those kids got to go to school somewhere. The kids in this development got to go to school somewhere. So this, I thank you for saying about that. It's already, a lot of these schools are already capacity pointing. These kids got to go somewhere, but just the traffic, you just keep pounding stuff in our River Oaks area, our Croissant Park area and these streets cannot be widened. I mean, 9th Avenue, 20th Street, there are two-lane streets in residential areas and they're all ready to capacity every day. I mean, sometimes you got to go through three or four light changes to, to move in the morning and then now, let's see, oh, whatever, what's the solution? Build 34 more! You know, that's just, doesn't make sense to me. I mean, and you talked about the trees, but I don't know if anybody realized that, I got one more second, or, in the very back, they have three of the best mango trees in the neighborhood and you wouldn't know that unless you lived in the neighborhood. And I guess they're going to have to take those down, but those, everybody knows, those were the best mangoes in the whole River Oaks area and, so, see, you, you guys don't live in the neighborhood. You don't see it every day. You don't see the traffic. You don't see the consequences. You're not going to feel 58, 70 more cars on a two-lane street. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, it, it was a great neighborhood. It was paradise, you know, in the day. I was born in Broward General and like the eagle said, you know, call someplace paradise, kiss it goodbye. I mean, because now it's just not the same neighborhood and the developers just keep getting their way and getting their way and we just keep getting pounded and pounded.
Thank you.
So I got, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead. I have a quick question. Do you know by right, do you understand by right, they can actually build twice as many homes? They could actually put 60, 70-
So I should thank them?
By right, they could go and do that.
Okay, well, thank, thank you.
Well, that, that means that once it's, once it's gone with a lower density, it can never happen later on, can't be-
Okay, so-
Can't be someone come in with a higher density.
So instead of 68 more cars, I should be thankful that it's not 150.
By right, they can do that.
I, I understand that, but I mean, you can say no, right?
There may be a lot of other developers that would love to do that. I'm just saying.
You can say no.
I want to make sure you understand that.
Of course, I mean, you know, I know the capitalistic system. I know it's the money thing and, you know, I just hope it's just not a rubber stamp and, and you're not on ground level there. You're just not there. You know, I'm there. I see it every day. I live in every, I walked down 15th Avenue to get to our River Oaks Civic Association meeting and, and you got that thing on 20th Street, La Preserve. You might as well call it La Concre. They didn't preserve anything. They built a big wall around it.
I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
Thank you.
On another note, there's, there isn't, looking at the aerial, there isn't a lot more developable parcels around there, so it-
Oh, good, so we got them all?
Well, so at least-
All right, good job, guys. We got all of them. Oh, there's actually on Coconut Drive, at the end of the thing, there's 10 feet in between the street and the creek. So technically it's waterfront and you can build those mini cluster homes because there's a good 10 feet right there. I would check into that if I was you. And, you know, you can build right there because there's nothing there right now.
Thank you so much.
Touche, touche, nicely done.
And I don't know if you were sworn to speak, okay, if you want to swear her in, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucy and I live in La Preserve. And I know you, so don't worry. Yes, how are you? I, I do want to acknowledge though that he does walk everywhere and he is a joy to see in our neighborhood in River Oaks. As you can see, I have a brood here and when I told them that there were plans to get rid of all of that land and put more homes, one sec, you can say something in a sec. My kids were heartbroken. We see the part of La Preserve that maybe you don't see and we see all the animals and the wildlife and I'm curious to know where they're all going to go when this gets knocked down. And I'm also curious as to how close to our fence your zero plat lines are going to be. And also we do drive down 15th. There's no sidewalks on 15th. There's always bikers. There's always people walking their dogs and there's nowhere for them to go and now you're adding extra cars, which means more accidents to happen, more people that have nowhere to go when they walk, especially after it rains because there's no drainage over there. And you either walk through a puddle that's knee-high or you walk in the middle of the street that's now going to have a lot more traffic. And I'm sad to see where those trees are going to go. They are a part of our view as much as they are of anyone else's and where are all those critters going to go? I mean, all the critters. We've seen monkeys. And we've seen foxes and we've seen all the different woodpeckers and birds you can think of and, and I don't know where they're going to go when you take that down and the little trees that you're going to plant are not the ones that they're looking for. I'm not a fan of it and I agree with him. We need some more open space. We need green space. We need places that people can explore, kids can explore, so that they can see what we have in this world. And we don't need more places for people to live. There are thousands right here that are all being built that people can live in. So we just need to keep that all in mind and I, I'm sad to see it go and I just wanted to, my kids wanted to come, I wanted to come and we wanted to make sure that we had our voice heard, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something now?
She would like to say something. What do you want to say?
Can, can I just ask a clarification question?
Yes.
Robert, I thought I heard that you were adding sidewalks on 15th Avenue, is that correct? Or, yeah, it's just a simple question.
Yes, on the sidewalk issue, and it's, it's true, when La Preserve was built, they did not install sidewalks along 15th. For this project, we will be installing sidewalks along our side. And in addition, there are sidewalks on the west side of, adjacent to the site. So at least for this area, there are sidewalks on both sides of 15th for this part of the strip.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wanting to speak?
I just wanted to say one thing to the family that just spoke. I remember when La Preserve came, I was actually on planning and zoning at that time and I was thinking as I drove the project today, what that looked like before, but it has now become, I think we're going to hear from the neighborhood president, but we're, you know, at this point, it's part of that same neighborhood, so I thank you for coming and speaking and I hope you live there many years.
Nancy Long with River Oaks, president of our civic association. I want to invite you guys to come to our, our meetings, start Thursday every month. You'll learn more about our neighborhood. Right now, stormwater from the city is being done all through of our neighborhood. We're going to have sidewalks everywhere, including on 15th Avenue. We've talked about widening 15th Avenue and we also talk about 20th Street with the semi trucks and all that. It's an ongoing thing with the city and Public Works and I've been president five years and I haven't given up and we are making progress with them. We do traffic studies. Everything's on hold now to, after the stormwater is done in our neighborhood. It's going to be a couple of years. We have been taking the animals that are being abandoned over to our Stormwater Preserve by 95. We're putting foxes over there. Our peacocks are starting to go over there. We're starting to see the raccoons get out of our yard. They're heading over there. It's got a wonderful bridge over there, two lakes, the trees are coming in fine, the grass is tall. Right now it's closed off because of the stormwater, but it's, it's really a very pretty reserve. We have two wonderful parks on 24th Street. 24th Street, there's a little park there for children, has lots of animals, lots of birds. There's a little pond there that goes into Georgia and Oaks. So we have a lot of wonderful things that, that because you are in La Preserve, our whole neighborhood has a lot to offer. I'm happy that we're going to have more children in our neighborhood. We, I grew up there, not grew up there, I moved there in the 80s and I built my home five years ago. We never used to see children. My neighbor had a child that grew up with no neighbors. We're starting to see children in our neighborhood. We're happy about that. We're happy that you're not putting cluster homes in there. We have it five acres down at the end of 18th Avenue and 24th Street. They're trying to put 18 cluster homes, little tiny boxes in there with no yards and, and everybody, and 90-degree garages. It's horrific. So we're, we, and when they presented this project to us last year, we were very happy that they were going to put a beautiful project on 15th Avenue. Yes, the traffic's backed up because of the Marina and even more so because of the stormwater that's going on in our neighborhood and we can tell when the traffic light turns because the traffic goes fast. But we're, we're, we're dealing with it and it's going to get better. It's just a matter of time. We've been dealing with it. We have a lot of, we're on the list for a lot of traffic studies. It's just, we can't get them right now because of, of stormwater. So we've got a couple of years of hard stuff going through here, but in the end results with three to five years, it's going to be beautiful and we welcome single-family homes in lieu of cluster homes. We think the designs, the different designs of the house is nice. We think, we, we, we were hoping that we relocate trees and keep most of the trees, but they have provided and presented a very luscious landscape with some very nice-sized trees. Our other concern was the flooding and because of the height of it and they really don't have any neighbors, they have the Preserve and in the backside and the church is on the other side. And one other wonderful thing you might want to know, the money the church is going to get from selling this, they're going to put a community center there for your children where they can go play inside, basketball. They're doing a lot of stuff for our neighborhood children because it's growing. So yes, we're changing, but we're changing for the better. So we look forward to this development coming in in lieu of some of the other developments that have been presented to us and thank you very much. Any questions?
I-
Start Thursday every, every month, 7 o'clock.
I just wanted to say, when I drove through your neighborhood today, I want to commend you on the number of signs I saw out advertising your neighborhood meeting. I just wanted to say, when I drove through your neighborhood today, I wanna commend you on the number of signs I saw out advertising your neighborhood meeting, what a great thing. So, thank you for doing that.
We've come a long way, we've got six board members now, our meetings are thirty to forty people, very enthusiastic, we have volunteers out every day helping with the neighborhood, um, we had Net Care, uh, Florida Cares Day. We had a cancer person that was recuperating, had like nine citations, we all pitched in, we got our yard and our house up to par, they took off the citations. She, she's happy, I mean, we, we, we do, uh, street cleanup every month, we do drain cleanups. Our neighborhood is, is very positive, very strong, and we have a wonderful time, it's a very happy, happy meeting, so third Thursday every month, seven o'clock Nazarene Church, right next to the, where they're putting the development in, we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public to speak? Were you sworn in?
I was not.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Ryan Johnston, I'm a River Oaks resident, uh, vice president, I am responsible for the signs.
And you did a great job.
Thanks. Now, Nancy did remind me, uh, basically, everything she said was more than actually than I even came prepared to say, but I, I support it, I fully understand that they can actually pack more into there. Uh, I think single-family is great for that area, it, it is primarily single-family, we do have some, some duplexes in there. Uh, but I think, uh, to put single-family in there is a great idea. Uh, I would love more open space, but I also understand this is private property. Um, so to ask somebody who owns this privately to make it an open space is just not necessarily reasonable. Um, as far as the, the trees, I actually, uh, am a big fan of trees. Uh, and I do know that there are primarily invasive trees in there, there are some, some live oaks in there, uh, but if you were to talk to an arborist, I would imagine that they're not either healthy or really fit, I don't know what the term would be, but fit for a storm, that would actually last through a storm. So they are proposing putting new live oaks, we are River Oaks, and, um, actually Nancy, uh, I've been telling Nancy, like, we need some River Oaks, uh, at the park, we, some oaks, we don't even have oaks over at our park, so so more trees, uh, less density, although, yes, uh, my buddy Ted is leaving here on me. I know, I know he doesn't want more, yes, he does walk around, uh, but I think when we get into wanting to dispute any kind of new development, i- it's maybe a fear of change, I mean, things change, but I think we also have to remember when we first come into these communities, they're changing from the people that were there before. So we're always gonna be changing, uh, if we're changing responsibly, I think that's, that's the way to go.
That, thank you.
Well put, your, your association has a very positive outlook and, and your, in your neighborhood, as I drove through it, I've had a good feeling of it, you, you're doing a good job navigating to the future.
It's Nancy's responsibility there. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wanna speak? Have you been sworn in? Is there anybody else that's gonna be speaking on this, like, just come on, but line up over here and then.
Maybe they also haven't been sworn in.
Yeah, let's just swear everybody in.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand, do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, um, I'm also a River Oak, uh, resident, I'm, uh, my name's Pedro Cordero. And, uh, I support the project as long, you know, single-family homes, and it's definitely improving the neighborhood, and, uh, you know, progress is progress, I mean, I agree with what they're doing, and rather have single-family homes than a bunch of cluster homes. You know, that are, you get a gazillion people in the same area. So, I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say, I mean, I support it a hundred percent.
Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, my name's Robert Schweitzer, I'm also a resident of River Oaks. Um, I think that this would be a good community, development for the community, I'm not a fan of, um, all the development in communities, uh, around the area, but I think this is a good one, the single-family homes, and would be good for the values of the area. So I, um, hope that everybody supports it, and, um, can look forward to having another great community.
Thank you.
How's it going, good evening, my name's Nathaniel, I currently rent in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and I just wanted to take the time to chat with you guys today. Um, about really a supply issue, right? So, uh, I appreciate the fact that developers like Thirteenth Floor are bringing more, more supply to the market and giving renters like myself, who've been trying to buy a home for two-plus years in the city of Fort Lauderdale, uh, another option, another great option. Um, I think it's really unfortunate that, that people like myself are having to move out of the city of Fort Lauderdale just because of a supply issue. Um, so if there's an opportunity, especially in such a responsible way, uh, to bring new, new homes to the market, I think it's really, really important, and, uh, will give us an opportunity to stay in Fort Lauderdale. So I hope you will, uh, absolutely approve this project and, and give renters like myself an opportunity to stay in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant wanna rebut anything, or you? Okay, I'll bring it back to the, um, to the board, the comments or a motion? Sure you can.
Thank you. I, um, I just wanted to, uh, take this opportunity to say that I used my phone to look up the population of Sunrise Middle. And I just, um, think it's important for us as a city to realize Sunrise Middle has thirteen seat, thirteen students under-enrolled, it's ninety-nine percent of enrollment, and River Middle's a hundred and twelve percent of enrollment. So not, I'm not saying to deny this project because of it, but I think as a city, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we do have successful, particularly New River Middle, successful middle schools, particularly Sunrise Middle, we are, we are succeeding in these areas. And as we move forward and welcome new families into our community, we need to be having that conversation about how we're gonna make sure that we can continue quality public education. Fortunately, we have Zoe Saunders, uh, as chief education officer of the city. But I think as we look at this tonight, we just make it, we just need to be very aware that this is a neighborhood with good schools, we want it to continue to be a neighborhood with good schools, so whatever we can do as a city to promote quality development and good schools, I think we need to do. I don't know how I phrase that as a condition, my back's to the staff, so.
I don't know if that's a condition, that's more for the good of the city, probably.
Well, it's, it's just making, I think it's just keeping it on the front burner of, as you have a development occurring somewhere, of the people that are also monitoring education, so.
Maybe the city has a better idea than I do. Mary, why don't you run?
Well, when, when we talk about the level of service issues, that's in the, uh, the, the land use plan, so that would, I suggest addressing that maybe afterwards, uh, if you wanna talk about.
And, and I'm not talking about changing that, we really can't, cuz we're tied into a county, county agreements on this, so.
Yes.
I'm just saying, as a city, we need to be very aware that our middle schools are successful, and I, I am going to actually move to approve this in just a second, but I just kind of wanted an awareness that we, maybe we just refer it as an extra condition to make sure the chief education officer is apprised of this development, can we do that?
I think that would still be for the good of the city.
Yeah, this, I mean, the development itself is subject to the school board report that they obtained, so they are looking at that, that, that was part of the analysis of this development.
I am well aware of concurrency, yeah. Um, and I know how fast it goes, so I, I, um, as people get in line for money, I always think it's good to be aware of what your needs are. And, uh, continue to advocate, with that, I'll, I'll move to approve with staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And before we vote on this, I do wanna make a comment, um, and, uh, I thought the, the comments from the, um, public were, uh, very well taken, I, I understand, you, you, you don't have to reply, I understand your concern. And I understand the concern in every neighborhood, um, where there's buildings that are going on, on, um, on empty land. Uh, the, the thing about this, and specifically with a lot of different plots of land, is the alternative to what's there is worse sometimes than what's being presented. Um, so sometimes you're, and in many times in life, you are given the choice between two things that you might not like. Uh, one being worse than you might not like. Uh, I, I think that this neighborhood, um, you know, I, I've driven the neighborhood before, I have friends that live in La Preserve. Uh, I know the neighborhood pretty well, uh, I do think it's, there's a lot of traffic there, but I, but legally, you can't deny something because, um, there's a lot of traffic. That's something that has to be done on a different level than we're on right now, and I'm just saying this to you, to explain to you uh, how it works, cuz sometimes people show up to these hearings, and they think they're rubble, they're rubber stamping something, or they're just gonna sail things through, I, I don't think this, this board ever does that. We, we sit, we talk, we discuss, um, I've talked with Mr. Lockery about my concerns, uh, about different projects, and this project as well. Um, but I think that overall, I think that walking away from this, making, I don't know if it's gonna make you feel better or not. Um, but we, we are limited on what we can do, it's the same thing that Mary just discussed. We're limited on what, what she wants, uh, in, in, in school areas. So, uh, on that note, um, I will take it back to the board, we have a, a first, uh, motion and a second.
May I read the resolution?
Yes.
I'll add one more thing.
Can I ask a quick question? Are we voting on just one item?
That's what we're.
Uh, this first vote would be on item four, which is, um, the site plan.
We're voting on one item.
Uh, ye- uh, yes, I will read it. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan, level-three development permit for the property located at twenty-three hundred Southwest Fifteenth Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the residential, single-family duplex, low-medium-density district for the development of a thirty-four unit, two-story, zero-lot line residential development, case number UDP S two-one zero-three-three.
Great, now you're gonna do.
Well, I didn't, who was the second?
Mary was first.
You were, okay. Okay. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Now we'll take.
Mary, you wanna make a motion on number five?
Yes, next to them.
I'm recommending approval, I move to recommend approval of case number, hold on.
UDP P two-one zero-zero-four.
Based on the findings of fact, the facts in the study staff report, and based on the testimony heard by the applicant, and the board finds that the application meets the, the, uh, applicable criteria, cite it in the staff report. Am I doing all right, Charlie?
Excellent, thank you.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, you wanna call the roll?
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Ms., oh, sorry, Mr. Scott, oh, sorry. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Sorry. Six-zero passes.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
All right, our next case, uh, case number UDP V two-one zero-zero-seven. And it is a vacation of a right-of-way, any disclosures?
Mike Waymouth, none.
Jay Scheckman, um, I have no disclosures.
Okay, Mr. Rotella?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Steve Gannon, um, spoke with applicant's counsel and did a drive-by-site visit at thirty-seven miles an hour.
The speed limit's thirty-five.
You're speeding, Steve.
As your attorney, don't say anymore. Mary, any disclosures? On the vacationing of the right.
I, I, yes, we spoke today, and I visited the site, thank you.
And I have none. Go ahead.
Good evening, chair members of the board, Andrew Schein with Lockery and Chalkus here representing the property owner, I will make this very quick. Um, the property is located seven-seven-seven South Federal Highway. Um, this is the overall, uh, uh, far view of the site, this is the close view. Um, the property is the one with the arrow, if you could see, uh, there's a white outline of the parcel, and you can see where the, the building is on the east, it's shown as right-of-way. Um, and it is right-of-way. So this is the survey of the property, the area in the red used to be an alley, it was vacated in nineteen thirty-eight. Um, for some reason, they did not vacate the entirety of the alley. So the area in yellow, technically on paper, is still an alley. Um, the building has been there since nineteen ninety-eight, how it got approved over an alley, I have no idea. Um, we're here just to clean up title at this point, so it's not an alley, there are no utilities on it, it's going through the middle of a building. Um, and that's really the entire presentation. For fun, though, I did put the ordinance from nineteen thirty-eight, uh, which was not recorded, we recorded it in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so there was an eighty-three-year gap in between the ordinance being passed and being recorded, so I thought that was interesting.
How much fun would it be to, to deny it?
When was it recorded?
It's like.
The, well, the, the ordinance was passed in nineteen thirty-eight, it was ordinance number nine-hundred-nine by the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, it wasn't recorded for some reason, I guess back then, either there was no recording department, or, uh, there was no requirement to record it, so for title purposes, we did record it, but this is the recording for the western half of the alley.
That's really funny. There's a library that, that, uh, that is on the Canadian and US side, and if you walk over it, you're in Canada.
The fact that it wasn't recorded is, is irrelevant to anything.
Why did you record it?
Fascinated they had a city.
Uh, to ha- because we had a survey, uh, it was this survey, we had a survey that said alley vacated pursuant to city of Fort Lauderdale, ordinance nine-oh-nine. Usually, when you have things like that on a survey, it shows recording information, so anybody can easily look it up in the future. Um, but we had to go through the city clerk's office, and they had to go digging through old files to find ordinance nine-oh-nine. Now, if anybody wants to find it, they could just look online in the public records, so, done purely for, uh, for ease of access.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say there's nobody here from the public to speak on this.
I, I, I think they did.
I'm standing the, I'm standing the landscape.
We did have a public participation meeting on this. There was one member in attendance, and she was just curious on what, what we were doing. No comments, uh, concerns or objections.
Yeah, uh, I would open the public hearing, I don't think there's anyone to speak on this, correct? No, let's close the public hearing, bring it back to the board, do we have any discussion or mo- or, um, uh, motion?
I move that we accept the item, approve the item, not accept. Are there staff conditions that are with this, Dwayne?
Yes, there are.
So I move that we, we, uh, pass this item, uh, subject to staff comments, uh, in the staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
You have a motion and a second, you wanna call the roll?
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
See, you got a yes out of me.
You gotta, you gotta wait easy.
You don't, you don't have a client in this building.
Can we defer these next three items to June fifteenth, Mr. Chair?
I'd love to, but, uh, is, is it the next three, or just, or just eight and nine?
It's seven, eight, and nines.
Can, can I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
Before we do it to the fifteenth of June?
Yeah.
This is like, not the first time we've done this, so my question for staff is will we really hear this on June fifteenth, and if not, can we defer it to when we actually will?
Well, I think they're trying to move this thing along.
We intend to, um, have it on June fifteenth.
Okay, well, that answers the question.
So is there a motion to?
I move that we defer the items seven, eight, and nine to the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Come on, somebody.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're gonna move those to the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Um, do we have any communication to the city? Mary, do you wanna say anything?
Oh, I have a lot to say, thank you, I, I, I just wanted to speak first.
As the chair, as, as the.
Well, listen, I was just giving him a friendly heads up, because if that hits zero in the fall, then that is something else, but we won't worry about that. Um, I do think, I do think we should be more cognizant of these school impact letters, I've done this for a very long time, since before there were impact fees. So I can tell you that the school board's not always right, and then they find it out later, but whether they're right or not, these are our children that we need to plan for. So I just think it's good, and I know, I know that, uh, Zoe is on top of all of this, but I think it's good for people to be able. but I think it's good for people to be aware of the fact that we have thriving middle schools. And as we're planning new things, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure to support them, so... I, I don't know, I, I know I'm being told that we can't do that, but I, I believe that there's some benefit to having communications between different departments and not acting in silos. So I would still say that when we know there's a project coming along that's going to impact a school to a certain degree and has the potential to make it more critically over-enrolled, which can ignite boundary changes, which may not make our residents very happy, that we should just make sure we have those communications going on. And I don't know that that's a communication to the city, that's my communication to the planning department.
We recently, actually last week, had some internal discussions with Zoe and connected her with the school board staff. And she's going to be taking a look at potentially coordinating some future meetings with those representatives, so...
And, and obviously, I have some conversations, so I'll just tell you, coming down the pike in the next year is going to be what we used to call boundary challenges, but now they're calling it rightsizing.
So I'll, I'll try to head this off a little bit. As a co-chair of the Urban Court Committee of the Broward Workshop, we've been dealing, starting to deal with this. And the city's education czar or whatever.
Right.
And, and she met with, with our group.
Right.
Along with, I forget which school commissioner, but it's, it's sensitive to everybody. Unfortunately, they can't build new schools. But what we're talking about is they can renovate or improve existing schools in a much quicker way. And there's also private schools that are looking to get into the downtown, so we're trying to facilitate that as well. It's, I think it's on everybody's radar, and it's, it's a critical thing. People aren't going to stop moving here because of that.
They, they aren't, and I don't suggest that we do, but I, I stay fairly current of some of the conversation.
They're going to put you on the school board.
I love it.
I'm never going on...
You got my vote.
That's the problem.
You have no power if you go on and, never mind, I'm not going to say what I was going to say, but you're much more able to make change from the audience.
Yep.
Just always remember that.
Good meeting.
So anyways, okay, but what I want to talk about is what we got from Shari late this afternoon. Can we talk about that for a minute? Did we already talk about that? I'm talking about the motion forms that are on your table here. So I just wanted to know, just for purposes of education, what statutory reference is prompting this document?
So in the, in our code, it talks about the fact that you should make a finding that the amendments, the text amendments that we do are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that's why that language is included in there. And then in the statute, in Florida statute 166.033, it talks about making findings. Basically, we interpret it as findings of fact. So that's why we always ask you if it's based on the findings of fact in the staff report or what you're basing your decision on, because you actually have to make a record of why you're basing your decision. So that's why you'll see sometimes when it goes up to the city commission, people are asking, well, why did they make that decision? Because it has to be very, very clear of why you, you choose to approve or deny an item. And then in Florida statute 166.033, it makes a specific, it mandates that you have to actually cite to the code section as a reason for your denial, as a basis for your denial. So you actually have to say code section 47, whatever it is, as, as a basis for your denial. So that's why I set it up like that, so that if you read from that, we'll be able to make sure that hopefully this board's decisions will stand, so, yeah.
I, I, I like that you did this for us. I just, my only thought to you is if you should have to say what you're not meeting, you should have to say what you are meeting. I think it should go both ways. I don't think we should just be leaving sloppy and saying we're depending on the staff report or something. I, I think you should have to, if you have to articulate it one way, you should have to articulate it the other way. And that was the comment I wanted to make, this is not for the good of the city, this is just for the good of our board. And I would like to see these used by the city commission.
Oh, ooh.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, gosh, if we're doing this, they're like the real people, right? So I just throw that out.
All right.
Whatever, what's good for one probably be good for everybody, maybe, I don't know.
All right, and we'll consider that also for the good of the city, right? Both, communication to the city, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Steve Gannon.
Second. Where'd Mike go?
I think Mike walked out.
Okay. All right, thank you.